Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 22nd, 2011, City of Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
President.
Alderman Moizio.
President.
Alderman Figueroa. Alderman Newsom.
President.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman Needham.
President.
Alderman Larson.
President.
Alderman Rivera.
President.
Alderman Cunningham.
We have a quorum. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. We're going to go into executive session immediately to discuss items of real estate and settlement of claims and pending litigation. A couple of that have been added since I was prepared. So I would like to take a motion from Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moizio, to go into executive session.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest. Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Okay, we'll go into executive session again. The reason for this is we have some people here with us tonight that are here strictly for the executive session, and we didn't want to keep them for the entirety of the meeting. So I anticipate this going approximately 15 to 20 minutes at the maximum. All right, motion to come back into regular session by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We're back in regular session. Okay. I will now pick up where we left off with the mayor's comments. First off, I want to congratulate the new appointee to the deputy fire chief position, Jose Hernandez, on his promotion and his willingness to take on this role and the myriad extra duties that come with the title. D.C. Hernandez is here tonight. I would like to ask him to stand so that we can give him a round of applause, acknowledge Thank you very much. Second, I received a letter today from an organization that is known as Infinitec North, the Division of the United Cerebral Palsy Association of Greater Chicago, notifying me that one of our young residents, Joshua Martinez, has been awarded one of the organization's 2011 Outstanding Student Technology Awards. Joshua is a student at Clearview. He is aged eight, and he's worked very hard to maximize the use of technology to enable him to be part of the educational opportunities in this community. He uses technology in order to work on mathematics. He enjoys number-based games and is able to communicate in writing by using specialized software. I will be inviting Joshua and his family to come to a council meeting in the near future where we can acknowledge him with a proclamation from the City of Waukegan. And I will be calling the family tomorrow to hopefully set that up for the next city council meeting. I'm sure, though, a lot will depend on his ability to get out and to join us. I would like to publicly announce that we have begun a new pre-council meeting session called the Committee of the Whole. These are public meetings that will be held on the Wednesday before the scheduled council meetings and are intended to provide the council the opportunity to ask questions about, discuss, and possibly change agenda items before they make the final council agenda, which is posted on that Friday at 4:00. I would like to invite the public to these sessions, which are scheduled at 4:00 and will run until 5:00, and are treated just like any regular open meeting save there is no public comment. We will be scheduling special discussion items for these meetings that will cover a range of important topics that are working their way to the regular agenda, such as the future of the Genesee Theater and proposed methods of raising the capital that the city government needs in order to fulfill its mission of service to the people of Waukegan. Another thing that we will be doing, we will begin publishing attendance to each official city meeting on our website, which will help, I think, our residents better track the participation of their elected officials. Fourth, we will be going into executive session -- oh, I'm sorry, this was actually, I was hoping to have read this beforehand. So that's, don't need to go to that. But fifth, I want to talk just for a moment about the Port Authority containment disposal facility. We had before the city council, I believe it was two meetings ago, a request to provide a resolution of support for a project that would be down on our harbor, that would contain the material that's to be dredged from the harbor in about a 14-acre facility, that would basically create a new landmass. And there were questions asked about it, and the chairman of the Port Authority came and did raise an issue in regards to the city's water line. I have been in touch with the Army Corps of Engineers. They have provided us with all the drawings, all the engineering, to show how the water line is protected. They basically create a bridge over the top of the water line so that there's no pressure on it, that we will be able to have access to it if necessary. And that concept was provided to the Port Authority at their last meeting, and following that, they did vote to present a proclamation in support of the project. We are still moving forward with getting more information about it, making sure that our water line is protected. And as we get a little bit more information, I will bring that to the city council and present it to you so that the public can hear it as well. But right now, it does look like the engineering has been in place to take into account our water line. And this is not something that they're doing just for Waukegan. This has been done in other locations, and there are examples of it. And I will actually provide the aldermen with the information that I got from the Army Corps of Engineers so that they can see it for themselves. And obviously, if you have any questions, you can contact the Army Corps, and I would provide you with the contact number there as well. But it does, it does look like that engineering issue has been resolved, and it's something that I hope we'll be able to move forward on because this does impact the part of our lakefront that we have indicated would be open space, which is on the north end. And it will make the property far more attractive to potential buyers, who we hope will be partners in restoring that to a open green space, and hoping to move forward on those portions of our lakefront development while the rest of the actual building part of it will probably take a number of years to move forward on. We can at least do the green open space component to it. So that concludes my comments for this evening. Now we will go to audience time. We had one request for audience time by Callie Melton. Callie, if you're here, if you'd like to approach and speak from the podium and give your address, if you would, please.
My name is Callie Melton. I live at 310 North Jackson. I have come up here to speak with you on a personal level this evening. It very, very well be in April that I will be sitting up here with each and every one of you. I would like to make a personal plea to you all to resolve the budget problems that we're experiencing right now. I know it is not a very good time to raise taxes, but I think at this time, it's time for you all to bite the bullet, take responsibility, and get it done. We're facing a $10 million deficit. We need our police. We need our fire. It's time to stop parrying around and do what needs to be done. And that's all I have to say. I would very much appreciate it if you didn't hold this over until after the election, and that way, we would have to, the new aldermen, would have to take responsibility for the mess that's been made. And that is why I've come here this evening. So I encourage you all to take responsibility and do what needs to be done. It's ugly. It's not fun, but that's why you were elected to this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have taken a motion to accept the minutes of February 7th, 2011, regular meeting and executive session by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Eyes have it. Thank you. We don't have anything under resolutions and proclamations for this evening, so we'll move on to committee reports and motions. I would also like to say that we are waiting for Art Space to join us for their presentation. They had an event scheduled this evening that was a meet and greet, so there was a little bit of a time overlap. So once they get here, if we could, with your concurrence, we could slap that in between possibly the committee reports. Does anybody have an objection to that? Great. All right. Then we will open with the Finance Committee report. Alderman Needham, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A is to extend the contract with Creative Financial Solutions for professional accounting services from May 1st, 2011 through April 30th, 2012, in an amount not to exceed $175,000. Finance Committee recommends an ISO move that the city council extend the contract with Creative Financial Solutions for professional accounting services from May 1st, 2011 through April 30th, 2012, in an amount not to exceed $175,000.
We have the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken. Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
The eyes have it. Thank you.
Item B. Authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of contract to Sterling Fire Protection for the purpose of police equipment renewal and replacement, specifically a retrofit of the deluge system for the jail, which is a sprinkler system, in an amount not to exceed $22,990. Budget code 307130726394.
We have the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item C. Authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Microception Incorporated for the purpose of police department equipment renewal and replacement, specifically a project to install video and audio recording system in the interview rooms, in an amount not to exceed $29,999. Budget code 307130726394. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item D. To approve resolution to reallocate to the Village of Buffalo Grove, Illinois, $8,609,090 of the 2011 volume cap to be placed into a private activity bond clearing pool to facilitate the issuance of tax-exempt private activity bonds in Lake County, Illinois. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item E. To authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Camp Dresser and McKee Incorporated for the purpose of water plant renewal and replacement, specifically to disinfect the water, removal and replacement of filters, generators, and basins, in an amount not to exceed $245,000. Budget code 555-916027018. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item F. To approve a waiver of bid process and allow the purchase of vehicle tags, decals, and aluminum tags for riding. Decal custom image solutions that have cost not to exceed $12,455.50. An ISO move, and I believe that's the same price or very, very close to the one we had last year.
Okay. Thank you. We have the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item G. To approve a waiver of bid process and allow the mailing of vehicle tags and animal tags from Third Millennium at a cost not to exceed $22,000. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item H. Authorize the use of bond proceeds to award a contract to Becker Electrical Incorporated for the purpose of a new lift station generator at a cost not to exceed $71,700. Budget code 555-916027061. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item I. Adopt as presented an ordinance to amend Chapter 20 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan to add new Article 10 food and beverage tax. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item J. Adopt as presented an ordinance to amend Chapter 21 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan regarding rates for parking in certain municipal parking lots and garages. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please. Yes. Yes.
Alderman, if you could, I bid this project out. This project will include installing new meters in the metro lots. I bid the job out. I'd like to suggest that we approve the low bid for this project if it's passed, and that would go to Total Parking Solutions in the amount of $50,000. The second low bidder was TAPCO at $52,760, if that's possible. If not, we'll put it in committee.
I'll have to defer to Corporation Council. It's not on the agenda.
If it's passed, these are the two low bidders.
Yeah.
It has to be done by May 1st. We're going to do this May 1st.
Right.
That's why I'm asking for approval.
Since it's not on the agenda, it's probably not proper for us to pass it at this meeting. We can at the next.
Why don't we wait till new business makes a motion, hold it over, then it'll be on the agenda.
Good idea.
And you're still going to be all right.
Okay. Can we go back to the original motion, please? Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have the Public Safety Committee report. Alderman Larson, please.
Public Works.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public Works. I apologize.
Thank you.
New glasses today, so it'll take me a while to get used to them. Alderman Rivera, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works came to order this past week at approximately 5:00 in the afternoon. The first item on the agenda draft and solicit RFPs for citywide custodial services as presented, and that's just to go for RFPs. Item B, and that's draft specifications. Well, do we need to vote on that?
We need to vote on item eight. Yes. We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Aye. I oppose.
You oppose, Sam?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and that's just the draft specs. We're not, you know, for that. Item B, draft specifications advertised for bids for commodities for the Public Works Department as presented. Those commodities are, you know, water plant chemicals, copper horns, water meters, fire hydrants, van holes, and drainage castings. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item C is to exercise our option for a second year of our mowing contract as presented. And obviously, Tom, we're very happy with how the mowing contract went this past year. They're doing a good job, and it's not to exceed $95,654. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Then, of course, item D. Adopt an ordinance regarding certain water and sewage fees as presented. Your Honor, you know, as far as this ordinance is concerned, we do have, you know, there's a lot of sections in this ordinance. And we did go through each section. You know, there were some things that, you know, we agreed on, some things that we didn't, you know. I can kind of briefly go through some of the things that we're talking about as far as the first section of, I don't know if everyone still has their Public Works agenda. As far as water and sewer is concerned. Let me, which page? That would be item D in the Public Works agenda.
Okay, you wanted to speak to specific items contained within that?
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I'm going to do right now.
Okay.
Your Honor, give me a second here. As far as the deposit is concerned, and that was Section 127 of the water service. Going up, you know, basically, we're going up, basically, we're going up 100% in a lot of the, in a lot of the things that we discussed. For the deposit, you know, we're looking to go up, you know, from $50 to $100. We really, we all agreed to that. We had somewhat an agreement with that. The next one, the temporary activation of existing service for construction purposes. You know, we're, we're basically going up 100% on that as well. And this has to do with, and this is within the city, within the city of Waukegan. If you're building a house and a developer needs to make mortar or anything to do with construction, we're going up another $100. And I think not too long ago, our past, our, I believe it was Jody that came up with, we just agreed to $100 not too long ago. And I know we had a lot of, a lot of issues with the real estate companies that were kind of upset on it, especially in the one that they, if they were having a house inspection and needed the plumbing to be inspected, to turn on the water, they would have to, you know, pay an additional now $200 after when we just raised it to $100. You know, that's a big, that's a big chunk right there, to go 100%. You know, we were discussing, you know, a number of maybe 50%, you know, because going up 100%, that's a big, that's a big chunk. Well, we had this in committee as a lot of discussion, too, on it. So that was one. Now, for, you know, for construction, that's totally different, you know, if the contractor needs, you know, water there, you know, to make mortar or whatever, fine. But to show an inspection, you know, to have an inspection and to have it turned on specifically to inspect plumbing, you know, charging $100 bucks, an extra $100 to $200, that's kind of tough to swallow right now. Section 133, the discontinuance for violation of the chapter. Here, obviously, this is something that we, I believe we went up, this one here, we're also going up $100. This one here is a tough, one of the discussions that we talked about was, this is about delinquency in paying the water bill. You know, if they're having a hard time paying the water bill and we go up on, you know, up 100%, that's even going to make it even tougher for them to pay. So we were thinking of also cutting that to maybe 50% and not go all the way up to 100%. I mean, that's, those are some of the discussions that we had on that, too, as well. I know the, what our department does is they, you know, obviously, they put notices out, and these are done physically. They put a red tag on it. But, you know, and I know, I believe we used to have a payment, you know, some sort of a payment plan. Are we still doing that with, with our people? I know Sharon Barnes, when she was here, you know, she worked on a lot of that, but but are we currently doing any, uh, system of, of, uh, having some sort of a payment plan set up for them?
Your honor, point of order, if I may?
Alderman Tempest.
I think what you're saying, Alderman, you're not ready to pass on this either. You'd like to go back to committee where we can get the department heads in there and give you some more input of how you want it to go. Because you're, we're, I don't, you're saying a lot of things that shouldn't be.
Right.
And you bring up a lot of good points this evening, but the motion before us is an ordinance before us, and if you don't like the way the ordinance is before us, I would suggest you send us back to committee, your honor, and, uh, have a special committee meeting just on this ordinance, because it's a very important revenue-producing ordinance, and I think that'd be the way to do it.
It's a very important...
You bring up some very, very good points, I think. The, all the aldermen could attend that meeting or your committee could...
You know, if it was just a, a, a one, you know, an ordinance with just one section to it, but there's several sections to this.
Well, I would suggest, your honor, if I may, have that this be sent back to the Public Works Committee for, and bring the departments to answer the question.
Let me ask the chairman of the committee what, let me just say, let me say something first, if I might.
Right.
That, truthfully, your questions, you brought them up in committee.
Yes, oh, yeah, we discussed that.
And in that timeframe, did you have a discussion among the committee members of each one of these items that you were concerned about?
Yes.
And the opportunity then to amend the item before it came before the city council?
Well, we didn't talk...
It could have been amended at that time.
It could have been amended at that time.
Yeah, from the standpoint of timeliness and getting things done and knowing so that we, as I've explained at each meeting, knowing what we're gonna have to deal with so we can plan properly.
Right.
It would have been probably the best thing to have addressed these and made your, um, changes in committee, then brought it to us as amended by your committee. But obviously, it, I think Alderman Tempest is making a valid point that there are questions on this, so you could, we could do a special call on your committee as soon as this week, or we can do it the first part of next week, or we could make this part of the committee as a whole, where you have a broader discussion, the public is, is present, and everybody is then present to discuss this at the committee as a whole. So why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't you make the official request as chair to return it to committee? Let's then sit down and discuss which way we want to put this out there, whether through your committee, I think it needs to go to your committee to have all of these, this busy work done, and then come to us amended, so that we're prepared to vote on it as a body, as opposed to hashing through it all, one item at a time, uh, up here. So what we'll do then, Corporation Council, with your approval, is we will, we have a request by the chair to return this to committee. We will have it, though, prepared in time for the next city council meeting, because we can't wait any longer.
It's not like...
We can't.
Like we didn't, uh, you know, we seriously talked about this for about an hour and a half.
And that's understood, but I think from the standpoint of the, of the, having the item before you and having that discussion, some amendments at that time would have been appropriate. But that's okay, we go back?
We did amend, we did amend one.
Okay, well...
And that was, uh, when they were doing illegal tapping into our system.
Okay.
You know, that's the only one that we really amended.
You and I will sit down and we'll figure out the timing on this and get it all done and ready to come back to the, the city, the city council for the next city council meeting for them to then, uh, to deal with as a, as a document.
Okay, very well.
So, that'd be great. Okay, so we'll, item, what is that?
D.
Item D is being returned to committee.
An I so move to put it back into...
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, uh, to return item D back to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, so you and I will sit down and, and we'll get this worked out, hashed out. Okay, great. I believe that, that's, that finishes your work for the evening, Alderman. Next up, we have, unless, uh, Art Space has walked into the room, which they haven't, and next up, we have Alderman Larson and Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. Public Safety met on February seventeenth. We had a core presence. There was no old business, new business ordinance, amending chapter twenty-one, traffic and motor vehicles of the city code of the city of Waukegan to add a new section regarding use of mobile telephones while operating a motor vehicle. The Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to adopt as presented an ordinance amending chapter twenty-one, traffic and motor vehicles of the city code of the city of Waukegan, to add a new section regarding use of mobile telephones while operating, uh, motor vehicle. In essence, it's a fifty-dollar fine, and it jumps to two hundred dollars, uh, if there's an accident involving your use of a mobile phone while driving, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye. Eyes have it, thank you.
Item B pertained to the administration of bail and/or bond in the Waukegan Police Department. Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to adopt as presented an ordinance amending chapter seventeen of the city code of the city of Waukegan to add a fee for administration of bail and/or bond in the Waukegan Police Department, and I believe that amount was settled at fifty dollars, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
And that is all.
Alderman Cunningham, did you, are you in the affirmative on that?
No.
Uh, we have the no then, thank you. Eyes have it.
That was for, that was for B.
B for bond.
Bond.
This is a processing fee for our police department to collect if they can.
For the mobile phones?
No, we do not.
No, I had you say yes.
You voted yes on that?
No, no.
No on mobile phones?
Yes.
And then what about item B?
The same thing, no.
No on both, okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, thank you. Uh, that concludes the public safety agenda for this evening. Thank you, Alderman Larson. Uh, next is Judiciary. Alderman Figueroa is not in attendance this evening. I believe his vice chair is Alderman Cunningham.
Yes.
Alderman Cunningham, please.
On item A for Judiciary Committee, uh, the Judiciary Committee passed an I so move to adopt as presented an ordinance amending chapter six, city code regarding fees for the building and other permits.
We have the motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Conken. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
I just want to be clear, which one of these is for build, for the, um, business license?
That's B.
That's the second.
Next one.
That's B, okay.
A, aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
I want to vote aye, but your honor, I just want to, Anne, I know you're here, correct? And I think, Anne, can you just tell exactly where, where we're going from?
Anne, could you come up front, please?
Yeah, I think if I'm not mistaken, your honor, we're going from one point five to three point on those building fee percentages per the building permit fee, I mean, per the building total cost. Is that correct, Anne?
That's correct, yes.
I just want to make sure, I want to make sure I'm saying it correctly.
Yep, that's absolutely correct.
All right, if you can stand right there, Anne, as we go through, just in case.
Okay.
All right, on item, on, on number B, number B, Judiciary Committee approve an I so move to adopt as presented an ordinance amending chapter fourteen, city code regarding licenses and business regulations. Uh, I don't know if you want to hear what the new fees are before or after the vote, maybe before. Anne, can you kind of give us what it is before? Let me get the motion on the floor. I move, your honor, you want to go ahead and get a second?
We have a motion by Alderman Cunningham, uh, seconded by Alderman Conken. Okay, all right, to put it on the floor.
Can Anne go ahead and just tell her what the, what the old was versus what the new will be?
Right, it's, I will. Um, this is primarily an increase of our general business license fees, um, approximately fifty percent across the board. It's also of the, the license fees. It's also a cleanup of the general business license ordinance to, um, pretty much place all of our businesses into a general category with some, very few exceptions. Right now, the license ordinance is, um, extremely convoluted with many, many different categories, so that'll really make it much more efficient for, um, the, um, city, um, in order to administer it. And also, the, um, businesses will be divided up based on the size, uh, in square foot of their premises, um, instead of the number of employees that they have, which is the way that it's been administered in the past. So it's primarily a fifty percent increase in the fees.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just a question, is this gonna bring us in line with other communities in the area?
Yes, it is. It still keeps us within an average range, um, and many of our fees have not been increased for quite a long time, so it really does, um, bring us up into an average range.
Thank you.
And, and your honor, uh, for, not only for you and the council, for the rest of the public, we also discussed in, in committee that as opposed to trying to do this whenever, we're, we're gonna set up a timetable where we're, where our fees will gradually do, like on every seven years, I thought it was, Anne, or every five years, or think about doing it, so we don't have to come back, and it sounds like we're just gonna increase a hundred or two hundred percent. We want to keep it on a gradual, gradual scale. Uh, I think on one of our, on one of our ordinance, we had that, and we was thinking about bringing that into all of the, all the ordinance from, that represents the Building Department. So that's, that's something, if you could explain that a little bit, Anne, that'd really help us out.
Yes, I will. It's, this is, again, this ordinance is for general business license, and you mentioned something about the Building Department, that was the previous ordinance, but, um, we did it discuss, or you discussed at the Judiciary Committee, um, passing an ordinance which would, um, provide a fee schedule that would increase on an annual basis over, say, a five-year period. In two thousand and three, we did have such an ordinance, and so for five years, there was a smaller increase each year for five years. This ordinance does not do that. Um, as a part of the discussion at the committee, um, you gave us the instruction to look at that as something to bring forward, which we will do.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. We have the motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Conken. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
I'm gonna vote no, I want to explain my vote that, uh, I don't know that it's fair to be, I like everything else of cleaning it up, but the fact that you're gonna charge somebody more just by the size of their premise, I don't necessarily agree with that. So I vote no.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Clarification, please, we're voting on A.
B.
A, R, A.
B, Alderman Larson.
B. I'm voting no, because I think the increase at one time is onerous to many businesses, and at this time in particular, we should approach it from a more gradual basis.
Alderman Rivera.
And I vote no too as well, for the same reasons, I think we should do this gradually.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
What's our count?
Five, three.
Eyes, eyes have it, thank you.
It's not business friendly, don't you think?
Item C, uh, Judiciary, the Judiciary Committee passed an I so move to adopt as presented an ordinance amending chapter twelve, city codes for licenses and inspections of rental properties. Uh, and Anne, if you can kind of explain where we're going from, uh, and to where we're going to, that'd be appreciated.
Right, this is, um, and a proposed increase of our rental licensing, um, again, approximately fifty percent across the board, also changes the categories for rental properties, so that we really only have, um, two categories, as opposed to, um, previ, in the existing ordinance, we had quite a few different categories based on the number of units in each building. The new categories would only be, um, either, uh, the first category would be one to forty-nine units, and the second category, fifty units and up. That's for the annual license fee, and again, they're going, uh, the proposal is to increase them by fifty percent. Then there's also the per-unit inspection fee, which is for one-third of the units that are inspected each year. In addition, there are other, uh, inspection fees and, um, no-show fee and suspension fee that are also proposed to be increased, and those are all, um, to cover our departmental costs actually for, um, you know, re-inspecting and returning to the properties over and over again. Again, it does place us within an average of other communities that have the, this type of ordinance.
Thank you. Alderman Cunningham, we have the motion from you as, as the acting chair, we have the second by Alderman Conken. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham. Alderman Larson. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Eyes have it, thank you. Uh, under old business, uh, thank you, Alderman Cunningham, for filling in, appreciate that. Under old business, um, this was the, um, asking the Corporation Council to draft an ordinance to approve the amendment to the towing ordinance. Alderman, um, Figueroa has contacted Corporation Council and asked us to please hold this over again and return it to committee, actually, return it to committee for, uh, further work.
So move.
So we have a motion by Alderman Cunningham.
Can I talk to you? Yeah.
Seconded by Alderman Tempest to return, uh, the, um, item A under old business to, uh, committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it, thank you.
And, and your honor...
Uh, yes, Alderman Cunningham.
Corporation Council is also, we're returning the...
Perfect time.
The towing policies and things, all that's part of, returning to committee as well, correct?
Yes, Alderman.
All right, just want to make sure. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, they are, they all, that's part of one, all of those...
The policies, the, the police department policies and implementing the towing ordinance, what are you speaking of?
Yes, all that's, all that's part of one, that's supposed, that's supposed to be part of one of the towing and policies, supposed to be enacted together, so we're looking to bring all that back a, as one.
My understanding was that the towing policy that goes out to the towing companies was something separate and apart, that applies across the board to all kinds of towing situations, we're reworking those contracts, but there isn't gonna be a specific police department policy on towing vehicles pursuant to this particular ordinance, where a vehicle is used in the condition of a crime. That policy is still being written.
Okay, so we, we're still in the drafting stage, is, that's not something you implemented?
On that police department policy, regarding towing under this particular ordinance, yes, we're gonna be having to...
Right, and they're, okay, all right then, and I'll get that cleared up with you.
Okay.
I think we're talking about two separate things, and that's what it's, I think what we are. All right, so I'll get this, we're straightened up with you, Anne. Yeah.
Alderman Needham. I've got a question.
Yes, Alderman Needham.
The revised towing ordinance, I don't know if we're calling it a draft version or work in progress right now, did, did anyone from the police department review that or sit in and work on that? We had input today from the police department, they've got some concerns about the enforcement of it. We've also been looking at the ordinances of many other communities, just got another one today from Naperville, uh, one from Elgin. This is a very complex matter, and the council has a differing view, various Aldermen, as to, uh, how the, whether the order should be made tougher or more lenient, so we really don't have a consensus yet, and I think it's wise to put it back in committee, so we can rework it and try to come up with a language of agreement, or get a board on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Okay, so that will be returned back to the Judiciary Committee for their further work, and obviously, staff will be working closely. I think that, uh, the police department will be weighing, and has been weighing in on this every step of the way, so this is something that I think, by the time it comes back to you, should be pretty well fleshed out. So, uh, what we have now is, I have been told, that Art Space has arrived. So we have a presentation, I believe, that is going to be made, or... Just a few brief updates.
Yes. Well, we could...
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. We have a motion to take this out of order by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Conken, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Please, come forward, it's Heidi, correct?
Yes.
Okay, please, if you wouldn't go to the podium, please, so that you can be picked up by the mic. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Heidi Kurtz, um, and I'm Director of, uh, Property Development for Art Space Projects, and I have my colleague with me who I'm gonna let introduce himself.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Andrew Michelson, uh, I'm with, uh, Art Space as well in the Property Development Division as a project manager.
And the two of us, you're gonna see a lot of around here very shortly. We apologize for our casual attire this evening, we were just at a really fun event at the Greentown Tavern, reconnecting, uh, with tons of local artists and people interested in the arts, people supporting the arts, it was just a fantastic turnout. Waukegan Main Street helped us sponsor it tonight, and, um, that's really what our project is all about, is connecting with the community and making sure this is a local project that really, uh, meets the vision and objectives of all of you, and we provide an expertise, but it's, every project that Art Space does around the country is reflective is reflective of the community. And so what that event was tonight was just one example of several ways we'll be working in this community over the coming months to make sure that the vision fits the mission of all of you. So just quickly to update you, we are hoping to be under construction no later than July 1st of this year. Our financing is about 95 percent in place. It's a $12.5 million investment in the community. That's the total development cost for the project. And we've been engaged with all of you in a fundraising effort to raise the last remaining dollars that are needed for the project. And so depending on where our construction pricing comes in, that's anywhere from a 200 to about a $450,000 gap. We're very confident that those resources are here, that we'll be able to close that gap and get under construction with the project by this summer. It's a 12-month construction project and so it will be opening and leasing for occupancy in the summer of 2012. It's 2011, sorry. So all of the rest of our financing is in place. We're meeting with Lake County tomorrow and meeting at the Chamber in the morning. I cannot thank this community enough for your commitment and investment and perseverance. I know it's been a patient process for all of you. It's taken us about three to four years from the time we started to the time we're about to break ground. That's actually very typical for Art Space. But it does require a little more work upfront to get these off the ground. But once they are off the ground, they blossom into wonderful community projects. And the energy and vitality we saw tonight is just one of the many examples why we're here in this community and committed to this community. And I'm going to, Andrew, I, how we organize this is both Andrew and I are project managers, but once the project is under construction, you'll be seeing a little more of Andrew and a little less of me, but I am with this project through completion and up through lease-up. And I'm going to let Andrew say a few words about the construction process and some of the things that you'll see going on on the site pretty quickly.
So as Heidi said, again, I'm Andrew Michelson, project manager with Art Space. We have all the pieces essentially in place as far as the key partners we need. So we've retained architects, we know a general contractor, we're doing the preliminary bidding of the documents we have in place right now so that we can get our pricing together, understanding exactly where we are with the gap that Heidi mentioned, so we know what fundraising we need to do or none, probably not, so that we can proceed to closing, get shovels in the ground, get hammers swinging as soon as we can, but make sure that we have all that due diligence in place. So we've engaged a tax credit investor, we have a construction lender and a permanent lender all lined up. We'll be doing building tours with them actually tomorrow while we're in the city of Waukegan. So we have all those partners in place, it's just now a matter of marching through all that due diligence to get us to a point where we can close and begin that construction. Typically, Art Space does all of that at one single closing. So we'll do acquisition, close on all the financing, fund all the loans, and start work the next day. So that's what we're really marching towards right now is getting to that point. You know, late summer, July 1st is sort of our backend goal to be at that point. If it happens sooner, great, but there's a lot that needs to happen between now and then. And that's the process we've undertaken now to get all that, you know, Ts crossed, Is dotted, et cetera. Oh, and one thing that came up at the committee meeting we were just having, there's been a lot of question about, you know, how is this going to contribute to Waukegan beyond just the arts community? And we've engaged Pepper Construction out of Chicago to be our general contractor, but have asked them very specifically to make sure that every opportunity is made to engage on a local level, every contractor that is skilled and giving everyone an opportunity to participate in this project because it's very important to us to engage as much as we can in this community to ensure we're putting as much back in as we possibly can. So we're going to have job fairs, we've made it very clear to them that's an important goal of ours as well, to not just show up and walk away having just completed a project, but really engage in the community as well. So we'd be happy to come back and let you know the progress of that as we get to a point, we're not right now soliciting bids, as I said, we're just doing preliminary in-house pricing now, but when we're at a point when we will be doing that, we've made it very clear that Pepper needs to engage in that to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be involved in this project. And if that extends to partnering, bringing on maybe smaller contractors who can't do the full scope of work, to get them partnered with maybe a larger sub to do a portion of the work, to ensure that we can reach out as much as we can.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Alderman Moizio?
Just a couple of comments. I remember in the committee meeting talking about how Art Space does not fail and how we believed in them to get the job done and I'm very happy for that. One thing I've learned as a coach, and Coach Tempest will, I'm sure, echo this, and that's get talent and get out of the way. And I think this took off because we didn't, we didn't get ourselves too involved in it and we let them do what they do best. So keep that in mind, get talent and get out of the way and let them do their thing. That's it.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Rivera?
I just want to, you know, say that I took the trip to Minnesota and I was very impressed, you know, how we idolized that downtown area. So, you know, I expect that to happen here too and I think it's a great thing, combining arts, you know, with our redevelopment of our downtown. I think that is going to be our catalyst to get things moving there, bring people down there, especially the artists, you know, theater people. I think that's a great combination. So, good luck. Hopefully this, you know, I know it's going to work out, so I think this is a great thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, you know, the fundraising is ongoing, Jane Waller has been working hard on that with all her partners. Obviously, these days money just doesn't pour in, you know, but it's coming in. I still owe them another 500, so that will be coming next month. So, you know, my contribution will then have been fulfilled on that.
Thank you.
But it is something that's important for our downtown. It is the first, it is the first step in the rejuvenation of city of Waukegan's downtown. And it's kind of interesting that it's your project that's going to kick this all off and so we're very happy that this is moving forward. And we'll keep working with you in any way we possibly can. So thank you very much for coming this evening and thank you for meeting earlier today with residents and artists and discussing this project and its opportunities for them too.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, great. We will go on to new business and recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, which has approved the payroll dated February 9th, 2011, in the amount of $1,344,305.64. Motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman Needham?
Aye.
Alderman Larson?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item B, approved bills dated February 22nd, 2011, in the amount of $4,887,941.63. Motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman Needham?
Aye.
Alderman Larson?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item D, which is an amendment to the 2010 Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant. Take a motion by Alderman Moizio, seconded by Alderman Larson. Roll call, please.
What are we amending? What's being amended?
I'm sorry, Alderman.
Yeah, which part of being amended? Oh, I see this.
Yezel, would you like to come up and just give them a brief overview of that, of what has been added so that they understand what the change is?
Just by way of quick reminder, we actually planned the expenditure of our funds early on in the year before the program year actually begins. We are asking to amend our 2010 Annual Action Plan to include in addition to $222,693 in neighborhood stabilization, round three funds.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I missed, I just saw this easy, I missed this one. I apologize. Yeah, thank you, thank you, sir.
Do we have any further questions of Yezel? Great, thanks, Yezel, appreciate that. So we have the, we had the motion by Alderman Moizio, seconded by Alderman Larson. Call for the roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, clerk is in a sidebar. Sorry, Wayne, I didn't notice.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman Needham?
Aye.
Alderman Larson?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item E, except in place on file, the treasurer's report for the month of January 2011. Motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it, thank you. Now, item F, what I'd like to do, this is not actually a true action item before us. If each of you would take these and circle the picture that you prefer, we'll take that into due account and of course if we disagree, we'll just pick something completely different, but.
Two, two.
Well, no, do me a favor, let's not voice it, let's draw it, I mean, just circle and then we'll collect these at the end of the meeting and we'll announce next council meeting what the winning one is. Little suspense built into the process.
I don't like closed votes, I like open votes. No secret ballots.
Yeah, what is this? What's a Democratic ballot? Circle and put your name on it.
That's right.
Oh, your name is on there. At the top it is. Hey, I'm going for number two, so I don't. Sam, we don't have to sign it and date it, no?
Now, let's have a little suspense built in. I don't think there's any real need to do it tonight, so let's wait and see. We'll announce this at the next city council meeting or committee of the hall.
I have a big picture of it up.
What's that, Alderman Larson?
Put a big picture of it up.
We'll put a big picture of it up.
I think Dave wanted it tonight.
David, did you need it tonight?
We have to send them to the.
They have to go out for the printing?
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Yeah, Dave, would you leave the room and we'll turn all the microphones off and we'll announce who's won it? Okay, let me go through here real quick. Wayne doesn't get a vote on this. Well, I can tell right now it's image number two, which is the, a very beautiful shot of the Waukegan lakefront and harbor at night. And I don't think you'll be able to pick it up from there, but it is a wonderful shot. It works very well for putting in all the information that we need for the city sticker and it's provided to us by Jay Stevens, who has for a number of years provided the city of Waukegan the benefit of his expertise as a photographer. But I will say this, and I'm going to do something I don't usually do, toot my own horn, the very first photograph used in a Waukegan city sticker was my photograph of the lighthouse, taken back during the very early 90s. And I was always proud of the fact that almost 12,000 or 13,000 of those were printed and it was the highest circulation for any picture that I can think of that I took. So it, like, we kind of started the tradition. So in a couple of years, I may be back in here taking pictures and trying to get a shot at the city sticker in two years. So this is, this is a fun thing to be able to do. The city, it's always a nice little tribute to certain parts of the city of Waukegan and I think this is a great selection. So wonderful, thank you very much for taking part in that. And again, thanks to Jay and thanks to Dave Motley for setting this all up as well as Kelly. That concludes new business recommended actions by Corporation Council, I believe.
We had the parking.
No, I'm just saying that concludes that section. And now we move on to ordinances and resolutions.
No, no, under new business, we were going to add the parking terminals, make the motion, hold it over till the next meeting.
Okay.
I don't have a motion, so I'll wing it here.
What was that again for?
For the.
Total parking solutions for Capco.
Okay, so we need a.
I'm going to make a motion to award the low bid for the four pay and display parking for terminals with coin bill and card payment to TPS Total Parking Solutions Incorporated of Downers Grove, Illinois for the amount of $50,000. And I so move, the second, FYI, the second bidder was Tapco and their bid came in at $52,768.
So then this is going to be held over for the next. All right, and this.
I'd like to hold that over.
And we will hold this over for the next, we have a second by Alderman Tempest on that. And it will be held over for the next city council meeting because it was not on the agenda, we cannot actually vote on the item before us. So at the next city council meeting, it will be on the official agenda then for action. So thank you, thank you for reminding me. I knew I had item G put in their motion and then I didn't get to finish the rest of my notes, so glad you did it. Under 11 ordinances and resolutions, item A, ordinance rezoning property located at 906 Lincoln Avenue from B2 community shopping to R3 single-family residence in the city of Waukegan, based on zoning calendar, item number 2323. We have a motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Conken. All in, roll call, please.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman Needham?
Aye.
Alderman Larson?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Eyes have it, thank you. Item B, ordinance reflect handicap parking only in front of the residence commonly known as 210 South Sheridan Road. Take a motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Conken. All in favor?
Aye.
Is this a roll call?
Yeah, roll call, it's got to be a roll call.
Oh, this is, oh, okay, I apologize. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman Needham?
Aye.
Alderman Larson?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Great, the eyes have it and hopefully it'll stick this time. So we're all set on that. The family was very grateful that the city was, you know, willing to do that for them. Tom took his crews down there and ground off the stripes and got everything ready, so I think that we're set. Item C, another ordinance to reflect handicap parking only in front of the residence commonly known as 1033 North Elmwood. Motion by Alderman. Alderman Newsome, I'm sorry, I apologize for that. By Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman Needham?
Aye.
Alderman Larson?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Eyes have it, thank you. And I have instructed Alderman Newsome to kick me next time that happens, that'll help. So maybe my memory will work a little bit better. Next up, we have Alderman's time, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Conken?
Thank you. Just really quick, today was an election day for the primaries. I want to thank everybody that came out and used your right to vote to express your opinions. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Alderman Moizio?
Just two quick things. Mayor, I don't disagree with the meetings of the whole, but if we're going to publish attendance on the website, I take pride in not missing meetings. After my heart attack, I only missed one meeting. But I signed up for a class at CLC on Wednesday nights before the meetings of the whole and I don't want that to reflect, I don't want people to think I'm shrugging my responsibility. Maybe we could take a poll of when the best night of the week would be or when we can do it, if we have something like that, because I don't want, you know, I take pride in not missing meetings.
And those would be obviously designated too, excused or unexcused. The reason Wednesday was picked was because of how it fell in just the cycle of getting these things ready.
I understand.
We wanted to have time between that Wednesday and that Friday at 4:00 when they had to be posted, so we felt that Wednesday was a good middle ground to meet on it, so.
And one more thing, this, this that's going around in the country, this collective bargaining problem, I'm a union teacher and I can't disagree more with the fact of trying to take away a union's right to collectively bargain, that's just undemocratic. We may disagree and you may be able to yell and shout and holler at each other, but you cannot take away someone's right to discuss things. That's not what this country was founded on. We're going to have our own problems and you can, I can, you, this Alderman, I'll never not sit down with a union and talk to them and try to come to a point where we can get things done. But you cannot tell people that they cannot collectively bargain. That's a dictatorship. And you see what's happening in the countries that have dictatorships. All hell is breaking loose. And you have to commend the American people in Wisconsin and other places because there's other places where if, that they tried to do that in other parts of the world, as you can see, what would happen. So you cannot take away unions or other people's right to collectively bargain, that's just not right. If you have creative leadership and you come together and you work together, things can get done. When you have things like that and give people ultimatums, there's only one thing that happens[1656.16] like that and give people ultimatums, there only is one thing that happens when you give ultimatums, and it's not good. So I, I want our unions to at least know that. For me, that, that I would never not sit down and at least talk and try to come to a common ground. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Yes, I just wanna thank the public that came out to exercise their right to vote. I think the sixth ward had a, a good turnout. Uh, again, I wanna thank them for getting out in the primary and voting, and I look forward to them getting out April 5th. Uh, you know, some people say you're in too long. Well, I guess the voters say I've been in not long enough. So I will continue to serve them all. And again, I'm pretty sure I know who voted against me. But I'm gonna work real hard to get their vote next time. I'll serve them better next time, to win their vote back. Uh, and that's the American way. And I look at Keith Turner back there, my ex-opponent, he was out there knocking doors for me. Now, you tell, he's a, he's my friend. We were opposed at one time, but we came together for a better Waukegan. And that's what it's all about. Even your opponents, get them involved to make Waukegan better, and use their ideas that they may come up with to make Waukegan better. And that's what it's all about. We want a better Waukegan, a positive Waukegan, and we're gonna get that done, aren't we, Mayor? Thank you.
Alderman Needham?
You're getting soft, Coach.
I'm getting soft, I'm getting older and wiser.
I'll pass.
Alderman Larson?
Uh, I want to, uh, say that this Art Space project we heard about tonight and how it's moving along shows the value of this council supporting Waukegan Main Street. I mean, as, you know, as we have over the years, and because of their initiative, what, five, six years ago now? It's, uh, it's, takes that long for fruit to ripen sometimes. And this is certainly a demonstration that perseverance, uh, good-heartedness, and more perseverance pays off, and I wanna thank the council for supporting Main Street and, uh, their mission, 'cause it is a positive benefit, overwhelmingly positive benefit to the city at large. So, thank you again. Uh, I did not receive enough votes tonight to continue as your eighth ward alderman. Somehow or other, the, uh, people in the eighth ward, uh, chose to go in another direction. I have mixed feelings, of course, but, you know, I really have enjoyed the give and take of public service to the ward and the city over the past eight years, and working with my fellow aldermen and the staff of the city has been a wonderful education and experience for me. Thanks to all of you. That's all.
Alderman Rivera?
Thank you, and, uh, you know, I, I want to also, uh, you know, congratulate, uh, Rick Larson for being a good friend as well, not only as a fellow alderman, but, but being a good friend, too. We've, we've, uh, he's got a great wife, Judy, you know, good family man. So, you know, Rick, thanks for, for being there, for, uh, some of the advice that you've given me. And we've both engaged in a lot of conversations, so I wish you the best of luck as well, you and your wife. You're a great family. Thank you very much. Also, I wanna thank everyone, uh, that supported the Little Fort Lions Club, uh, Steak and Ate Breakfast that we, uh, had, uh, a couple weeks ago, over at the Waukegan Yacht Club, you know, for the things that we do in the community. So thanks for the support. It was a great turnout. We served over 700 steaks. Uh, I wanna thank, uh, also, uh, Mike, right, Mike? Who, uh, is part of the, uh, one of the scout leaders, too, of 255, who've always come and, you know, with their boys and helped us out tremendously. So thanks a lot, Mike, for being there and doing a great job. It was, uh, it was very successful. I also wanna congratulate again personally, Mike. Congrats, go to, uh, DC Hernandez. I know he's worked hard in his career, and you definitely deserve where you're at. So I wish you the best of luck. We're very proud of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh, Alderman Cunningham?
Thank you. Uh, three, three things very short. One, congratulations to, to DC Hernandez on, on the job well done, and your promotion, and we just look forward for you to train and develop new leaders as they come through, uh, the fire department. Second, I'd like to echo what Alderman Moisio had said. Uh, I think what's going on in, um, in Wisconsin and probably throughout this country, uh, those things need to, just need to sit back, and I think, uh, the unions have a point, and obviously administrative, uh, you know, to, to run cities and states and countries, there's a point, but there's always a happy median. So, uh, I echo, uh, to what he's saying, that, you know, to our unions that are here, where I am, and I think there's a consensus of all the aldermen, we're going to sit and listen, be more attentive to some of the things that's gonna go on as our negotiations move forward. Obviously, everybody can't get the things they used to get. However, I think there's a happy, there should be a compromise on everyone. And with a common goal of the city of Waukegan moving forward, I know those things can be achieved. So I thank Alderman Moisio for bringing that point up. Last but not least, Your Honor, tonight you, uh, it sounded like you forced on, I don't wanna use the word force, but this was a mandate that this is gonna be a committee of the whole. Well, uh, and none, now that I disagree with you, I don't think it's not a bad idea, I just think to say that these, this particular process is going to happen without it moving forward with various processes that we've had. Um, you know, it leaves, it leaves me with a, a kinda bad taste in my mouth. Uh, what I would, what I would wanna suggest to you at this point, this committee of the whole may sound good, but I think to say this is gonna happen when it was brought up two weeks ago, then to move forward with it now, uh, that's just not a lot of time for me. Uh, maybe this is an issue that needs to be put in a committee, or maybe we need to meet individually with you to get our opinion on this. We meet right now, and according to the statutes and the process that's been put in place, every first and third committee meetings, which were changed, you know, I, as I move forward, from a leadership standpoint, working with you and your staff, you know, there's, there's a few things that I think we're all gonna need to understand and work with, and that is, you can't tell me what to do, nor can I tell you what to do. But I think when we meet and talk, we can, we can kinda move forward with the best interest of the city, the mayor and his staff, and the council. Now, this is about the second time you've done this, Your Honor, and, and it just, it leaves me to believe, like, you're just throwing these things on us. And I don't wanna believe that. I think you're doing it with the best interest of the city at heart. But the perception that I'm getting, or the way I'm decoding it, is that this is the way it's gonna be. And I don't really take well with that, not because I disagree with you. I am a person who likes to digest things, talk about them, then move forward. Now, this committee of the whole thing, I know it's a process that was used on the county side, is an effective process, but I understand that process has been there for the last 10, 15, 20, 30 years. So it is something that works for them. What has been working for us, and I know change is good, but if it's not br- if it's not broken, don't try to fix it. This process works, and it works well with the body that you have. Now, I'm not really particularly crazy about this committee of the whole, 'cause I don't get it. The reason I don't get it, because we discussed these things already in our own committee. Then to come back and discuss them again in another committee of the whole, that's redundancy. You're the first one to bring up better processes, more efficiency for city government. So, I'm asking, and I'm hoping that, uh, most people on this council agree with me, let's talk about this a little bit more, as opposed to throwing this on us and say, "We better be here, and if we're not here, we're gonna be thrown out there that we're not attending, attending, uh, the necessary, the city business." Technically, the first Monday, third Monday, a committee meeting, technically, that's what, that's what we're supposed to be attending. This right here is just being thrown up there. And I think we've done a very good job, if there's issues that warrant us to meet outside the normal schedule, then we do that. I just don't see what purpose of a committee of the whole is gonna be discussed, something that's already been discussed in committee. Now, maybe I'm wrong for doing it, but I think to single us out, to say that if you're not here, you're gonna be, you're gonna be put out there so the public can see that. Well, the public also needs to see that we're here at this council meeting, conducting the business. The public also needs to see that we're in committee meeting, con- conducting the business of the city. So I'm a little perturbed with that, Your Honor. I, I don't think, I, I think you, you put that, you're trying to put us out there, that like, we're not really at the, trying to do the business of the city, and I disagree with you on that. I don't think it's intentional, I just disagree with this act. So, I'm saying, let's put this committee of the whole, and let's talk about it some more, to see exactly what it's gonna do, what it's gonna achieve for an efficiency, and to make sure the city runs the way we all want it to. Improve in our lakefront, better in our downtown, and, and better in our individual wards. I just don't see what this is gonna do to, to achieve that goal. Thank you, sir.
Motion adjourned. Second.
We have the motion adjourned by Alderman Moisio. Who is the second?
Needham.
Alderman Needham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.